Then we'll call Brandon. Select Board meeting, order.
I move to adopt the agenda of this select board meeting.
Okay. Any changes? Discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? For a little minutes.
I move that we approve the select board meeting minutes from December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and the select board budget workshop minutes from December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. I second that motion.
Any discussion, changes? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I abstain. No objections. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyland. The only, I submitted my report in advance, the only additions I have for updates today are two. The town had a call from the Army Corps of Engineers about a flood avoidance study that had been commenced some time ago that they want to continue on with in light of the summer events here in Brandon, so that will be interesting to go forward. And then likewise, the town was summoned to court today on a landlord-tenant matter, and I accompanied the rental housing officer and health inspector, and he did a wonderful job representing the town and our rental housing program.
All right. Anything for the town manager from the board?
Let's see, is this a property owned by the town or simply a property that?
Not owned by the town, not a private tenant, private landlord. Wound up in actual point.
Heather? Sorry?
Anything on the town hall gap funding grant?
Yes.
Was there any indication that how positive they were about it, or?
What I received back was honestly a form, I don't believe it was specific.
Anything from the public, from town manager that isn't on the agenda? All right, we'll move on to. We'll see back there. Uh, public comment and participation. Start with board. Anything? Oh, I'm sorry, rec directors. Sorry, Bill.
Oh, that's great. Uh, thank you, Tracy.
I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Let's try that one.
No, uh, thank you, uh, Tracy. Uh, the two thousand twenty-four ice rink is up and nearly ready for skating. The thirty-by-fifty-foot rink is located next to Performance Pavilion behind the Brandon Inn. Decision to test-run a walkable-to-downtown location was a response to some community members suggesting a change in venue. It is fortunate our ice tender, Wendy Biel, lives very close to this new spot. Thanks to Brian Kilpak and Nate McKeegan for their work constructed at the perfect time. Uh, shout out to Brandon Fire District Number One for their support in July. Uh, Brandon Idol spots are filling fast for the January twenty-sixth concert. We'll cap the number at twenty, so register singer today. I fortunately, all right, I pulled something Wyman to send. He was a, was a registered back in our short season of twenty-twenty. So it seems like a very fantastic appetizer. So that's why I skipped over to report. Uh, the Brandon Town Hall indoor schedule has been impacted by the floorwork. But when we get back upstairs, it'll be very, very busy, but town events being planned for nearly every weekend throughout the end of April and dovetailing into the friends of the town hall supports. Talking to, yeah, that's interesting, they already have quite a sizable number of events scheduled. Uh, check out Brandonback.com for more information on the town.
Thank you. Anything from, for the rec director from the board? And Phil?
I do.
All from the board. I just have a question.
Good job of being creative and finding the rescue squad, uh, building for Aikido today. That was a very, uh, creative use of space that works for the short term.
Yeah, but great.
It was great.
Allows us those kinds of things happen.
It really was, it was, I mean, say it jokingly because it was funny, but it was also totally workable.
Any other board member have anything?
Yeah, what about our commissioner? Any update on your rec commission?
No, no update on rec commissioner, I again, I've nobody been paying, I've worked with, uh, actually somebody who would have been at Aikido, uh, to do some administrative work, um, entering into this relationship, but there's no paying being given to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything?
Nothing from me.
Chris? I don't know if it's a change to you, Bill, but did they ever get the roof fixed before they put that floor down? On the town hall?
Oh boy.
That, we got a, we got town hall discussion later on, Dylan. But.
The roof, the roof was, the roof was, uh, fixed in as much that it's not leaking right now, but the repair has not been made, but again, that's on the board agenda.
You say it's stupid idea if it's not.
Anything else for the rec director? Neil wrote a public comment and participation. Start with the board. Diesel?
Nothing that's not on the agenda.
Heather?
No, thank you.
No?
Nope. Nothing from me.
We'll open it up to the public. Somebody on?
Nobody's raising their hand there.
Somebody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Neil?
I would like to make a comment, and I'm making it just for myself. Um, I've been a member of the Budget Advisory Committee for four years, I think. I have never been as disappointed as I was at the conclusion of the current Budget Advisory Committee meetings. We had three cooperative and, um, meetings where we discussed, uh, wishes of townspeople as had been told by other members of the Budget Advisory Committee. We had comments, we had, um, I thought come up with a reasonable perspective on budget. In the three meetings, the three first meetings. In the fourth meeting, it was like the select board sat down and decided, no, ignore all that. We're going to do away with the police stuff, we're going to cut the police budget, even though townspeople had said that they preferred more policing and not less policing. And it seemed like at the very last minute, we had a, oh, and, and we want three hundred thousand dollars worth of paving, which is going to push us up to what, a thirteen percent increase? I just don't feel like it was straightforward, honest, or cooperative. And I was very disappointed.
Thank you. Good comment.
Can you?
Yeah. There are.
Okay. The last meeting was a discussion about electric vehicles for the first firm. Uh, I can safely tell you, it's a biggest, it's a mistake. Especially if they're going to sit there, they build vehicles failing up at the police station for hours on end. Electric vehicles are meant to be moved, not sitting in an area and eating up. Once our batteries heat up and you go on the road, it's going to start to must be, it's going to start burning. And it's going to burn out. There's no recycling to the batteries. There is none for lithium. And they replace them there fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. You run a transport station, Tracy?
I, well, I, I don't, but.
Oh, you, you operate it for the town.
Well, I mean, my, my son and my wife do it.
So you should know that there is no recycling for lithium batteries. And if the town is trying to go green, that's not going green. You're creating a cesspool on lithium batteries. Especially with the solar array. Once you debunk, once I go debunk, what says you're going to affect money that this, the decommissioned? About the guy proposing, well, gee, I'm going to file bankruptcy. You have a question, Mike?
The, uh, on the solar array? That's something that was voted to go to a townwide vote or a bond vote, so that's nothing that the select board voted on yes or no, that's something that the general public are going to get to vote on in March on the solar.
Right. But, well, the electric vehicles, how's that be, how's that going green if you start replacing the pieces and parts and if the town wants to go green, that's not going green.
All right.
I was saying, if specific people want these cars, pitch in together, buy them, maintain them, take it as a tax write-off, as a donation to the town. We don't need electric vehicles, then we got to put chargers in, we got to maintain them, it's just a cost, and you'll never pay for them.
And the place the farmer lost to them, the officers that take them home, who's going to pay to have the chargers put in?
We are.
And who's going to pay the electric, the electric?
The cars actually have a three-hundred-mile range, and the police chief told us that a typical shift is like fifty miles. And so these cars are going to be able to go multiple shifts between charges. And to complete, to complete my thought, um, I, I've actually had an electric car here in Brandon for eight years now, and they're great in the winter time. Um, the truth is, I, I can camp in mine overnight, and they can stay in one place and run the heater and the computers, and they have plenty of charge to drive. There, the, the bigger question is, is it responsible to not get electric? Because what's happening around the country is that many departments are finding that it's much less expensive to own an electric police car than a gas one, and they aren't doing it because they want to save the world or because they want to like hug trees or anything. They're doing it purely out of economics.
Uh, but the way we go through cars here, they'll want one every two years, new ones. We just keep getting new, new cars, new cars, new cars, new trucks, it's that, it's sold. Now you're just buying new vehicles every two years. No, they don't, because how old they are.
I was told that the, um, that if they catch on fire, they, they can't be put out. And that if they try to put them out, all that water then becomes toxic hazardous waste.
And are they contained and removed?
And that, um, emergency personnel are being, having to learn how to disable all electric vehicles because if they're trying to get someone out of them, and they jolt the car, that their toes are getting run over by the cars. That, that we haven't been told a lot of the truth about these electrical vehicles. And, um, I know there was someone in town who wanted to get someone in here to present all the, all the facts to everybody prior to um, making these decisions, so that we know all the nuances of the electrical vehicle.
So I guess a couple of things to bear in mind is that electric vehicles actually catch on fire far less than internal, internal combustion engines. Like significantly less than internal combustion engines. Um, and so I think yes, there's a problem when they catch on fire, but to the extent that that is a reason not to get an electric car, I think is something good of fear mongering, to be honest. Um, and that, that I also would have to disagree with the concerns about them not working in sub-zero temperatures. Um, Norway, uh, has a very successful electric vehicle program. Um, also thanks to climate change, we're not getting sub-zero temperatures much anymore. Um, but I, I know Tim has said, you know, his electric car has done fine in Vermont winters. I know many, many people who have electric cars. I don't have one simply because economically, um, I drive my internal combustion engine till it dies, and then I will buy a new car, but no, that's a choice that the town is making. We have two cars on their way out. I might as well replace them with electric cars when we are getting almost benefits from the federal and state governments to do so.
Are they going to be able to catch the bad guys?
Yes. That's one that I can actually speak to definitively. Nobody can keep up with my car. And my car is just a sedan, it's not even fancy, it's not even like it's a sports car. But electric cars have all their torque at zero RPMs, which is means that they have instant power right from go. Gas cars have power when you rev them up, which is why you'll hear the engines go way up high, and then you'll pop the clutch and you'll race down the road. An, an electric car will always beat a gas car as far as catching the bad guys.
And then the final thought I have, and I know very little about them, but literally things I've heard as like homeowners insurance companies are not, uh, covering like electric bikes if you're plugging them on in your house or electric vehicles because of fire hazards.
A reasonable concern, but it's not true about electric vehicles. I, I've put in three electric car chargers for people, just as it's a hobby I help people with because I know how to do it. And, um, I, there's never been an insurance, um, problem with putting an electric charger into a, a garage or a house. Um, and my car doesn't have any warnings that are put out to, to, to keep them out of, um, garages or homes.
I actually have heard of this concern, and my understanding is it's when people are trying to use their regular electrical systems, regular plugs to charge their cars and instead of installing a dedicated car plug. And that just has to do with what the house's wiring is.
And to be completely fair, um, the Chevy Bolt had a, a version that came out three or four years ago that did have a problem with the batteries overheating, and my friend Jim Emerson owned one of those, and he was told not to park it in his garage till they fixed the problem, and it was like a recall, and they had to recall all these Chevy Bolts, and they figured out what was causing them to overheat because it was a design problem, and, and they fixed it. And so, yes, it happened, and that's where I want to reassure you that what you read was true, that there was a time on that particular model that they were having trouble with them catching on fire. But, um, as I say, I've owned, um, uh, electric cars for, um, eight years now, and my car has never had any recall or any problems with overheating or any problems with, um, the cold or, um, any of that, and, and I've driven my car to and from Florida where my folks live, um, about twenty times, and I've been out to Utah during COVID when I wanted somewhere to go, and I went to see the Grand Canyon. And so the car is good on long distances, it's good in short distances. I, I teach piano lessons up in Riften, my, I have students who live at the end of these dirt driveways, and I get up and in and out of there with the snow all winter long, last seven years. Um, it's, it's a very dependable car.
What's the cost difference?
The cost of, of the car.
Putting in a charge.
The, the charger is actually, um, very small. I, I, uh, these cars charge on two hundred and forty volts, and you can get a dryer plug for forty-five bucks at the hardware store and put it in your garage, and if you're good with electricity, as I'm guessing most of you guys are, it's not hard to put a plug in, and that's your charger. If you want to put in the ones GMP gives you, because GMP incentivizes these, so if they control it slightly, they give you a better rate, which is really great. Um, those cost about five hundred dollars for the charging unit itself, which usually comes with the car. And to install it, if you can, you know, again, handy with putting in a plug, it's simple to install. If you hire an electrician, another couple hundred dollars for them to spend a couple hours to put it in.
What's the price of the cars?
The cars, the average electric car costs less than the average gas car right now. I, well, I, I take that back. It, the, you can get an electric car for less than the average price of a gas car. It is true that some electric cars are very, very expensive because of a lot of reasons that make the market grow, because they've they have some very expensive electric cars. But my car costs less than the average gas car costs. Now, we all know that gas cars right now cost a lot. I think forty thousand dollars is the price of an average gas car right now, according to what I've read. Um, and, and you can get an electric car for forty.
Well, and I think specific to the police cars, what I, I thought we had somewhere, um, a price comparison had shown that the ones that they were looking at, once we got the federal subsidies and, uh, tax incentives, would be much less than getting new ICEE cars.
I thought it was closer than that, but, um, I, I think it's, it's, it's surely very comparable. It's, it's not more expensive.
Seth, when you're done looking that up, I've got a question before you know.
Go, go ahead.
Which is the, can you please explain to me again the municipal car lease thing? Because when I had first heard that we were leasing a car, I was like, well, that's good because electric cars are new, and I don't want to own an old electric car as a town, really. Um, but then it was, so it's like, that seems responsible, you know, because lease, like the, all the maintenance and stuff. But then you, you explained it's a better deal for municipal vehicles, is that right?
So Jackie is here, our finance officer, who can correct me.
Jackie that explained it, sorry, Jackie.
Yep, so Jackie, um, so my understanding, well, I can let Jackie speak about it, but it's basically less of a lease and more of a paying over time.
Okay.
Because you will own the car at the end, and it's just taking the car payment and spreading it on three years instead of either all upfront or a lease payment and returning it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, it's more of a true payment, and it's paid either like a annual or biannual payments. But it's more. So it's more like when you pay for your phone over two years, and then you actually own it at the end versus paying on a car lease, and at the end of two years, they're like, now you can pay again to buy it? Right. Okay. Thank you, that's helpful, because I can first.
Tim, we did have something on. I don't.
Trisha.
I was just going to make the, I was just going to make a comment regarding the Budget Committee that we had also presented data that mail-in voting did not increase participation in our town, um, which was again not really, um, accepted or paid any attention to.
Thank you. Brian?
Am I up next? Am I up next?
Who is that?
Susan Benedict.
Susan Benedict. My turn?
Are you on, uh, we're on public comment at this time?
Oh, never mind, I'm number seven.
Okay.
Actually, on those police cars, we just got one of them, the two that were, we were told weren't going to be, uh, usable, one just got inspected, and the other one's just waiting on a drive shaft, so I think we were given some misinformation uh, by the chief. I know one of them's back on the road, and the other one will be shortly. And I'm concerned about the other costs that are going to, going to come with the electric vehicles. I'm not in favor of them at this point. And there will be other costs. Somebody's going to pay to put a charging station at the police station. And there's just going to be, I know there's going to be other costs, and there are insurance companies that are not insuring electric vehicles now.
Um, I know I didn't have any trouble insuring my car with Progressive, which is a common insurance company. And, um, as far as extra costs, the, I think you'll find that what, um, other departments around the country are finding is that electric cars are much, require much less maintenance. Um, there's no oil changes, there's no exhaust system. Um, and so the, what they're finding, which isn't just an expectation, but a result, is that it costs less to maintain these.
I have to disagree.
Well.
Where do you, where, when they do need maintenance, where are you going to go?
Um, you go to, um, the place you bought them.
Because we're buying Ford.
In this case, they're buying Fords, I mean, um, I could tell you I get mine repaired, but that's not relevant for this.
If we did a municipal lease, then our repairs for the first two years are probably covered under a lease, three years are covered under a lease. And at that point, if the car is a piece of junk, and we all hate it, then we'll figure it out. But until then, most repairs are going to be covered under a lease, right?
Yes, and I will say that, um, I also have had an electric car here in Brandon, and I've got eighty thousand miles on it, four and a half years. I've never had to put brakes in it or anything. Like, all I do with that car is change the tires from summer to winter. I, I can I'm responsible for the budget in a different way than the select board is responsible for the budget. I would not be signing on to run a budget where I was looking to put a number in the budget that was unrealistic for what I knew I was going to have to spend, because then I'll come into a deficit situation, and I'll get criticized, and that will be correct criticism. I'm as tight with a dollar as any of you at the table, and I will guarantee you that the maintenance cost, from my personal experience, the maintenance cost on an electric car will be orders of magnitude lower than the maintenance cost of any gasoline cruiser that we could possibly purchase.
I'm just going to step in to say that I agree with Brian. Um, I'm not, maybe for all the same reasons that Brian is. Um, I think that we were, I think that, uh, at our budget meetings, our police budget and our chief misrepresented what I considered on his budget, along, especially with the cars. Um, we do have six police cars at this time?
Seven, is it six? I think six that are on the road and one that's not, right?
Right, I think.
We got, we got seven, we got seven cruisers. Um, I'm not against buying an electric car, I'm against it at this point in time, and I'm against at, I'm against with, uh, with the police department, with the amount of vehicles that we've got. I think that we could use those out until they're, I know that they've talked about trading the cars. The prices they're going to get for the cars, I don't think is adequate, and I believe that they should be running out until there's nothing left to run any, that's my own personal opinion.
So I, I have a question, um, one, this discussion all seems like it actually should be something around when we're actually talking about the budget. But my question is, are you wanting us to revisit the police budget at this point to do something about?
I'm not, I just said I, I, I'm not want to revisit any budgets or nothing, we've, we've kind of set our budget the way we did. Um, I was just saying that I wasn't, we were talking on electric cars, and I, and the reasons I wasn't in favor of the electric cars this time. Karen?
Yes, I sent a letter, an email to the select board, uh, some of you responded, and I appreciate that. Uh, we will have to agree to disagree, as you know. Um, so I heard about this proposal, and, you know, electric cars are still relatively new being used in public, uh, you know, purposes. And so people are buying them individually because there's so many tax credits, and honestly, you have to really question, when something is really a good deal, you don't have to have so many tax credits in order to get you to buy it, it's only when it's maybe not such a good deal that the government has to give you so many kickbacks to make you go in this direction. So you have to think about that first, um, because you're managing public money, not just yours, so you may have had good experiences, and perhaps it could be a good idea maybe for the town manager's car, or maybe Public Works, because if they have to charge, you know, so maybe he could sit in the car with his laptop. But we're talking about public safety, and public safety is a very different thing, and we don't want police officers to be worried about whether or not their car needs to be charged when they need to be serving our safety. And if we should happen to have the power outage like what the Green Mountain Power is telling us all to plan for, what will we use, a diesel generator or gas generator? I mean, are we not going to have police cars for two or three days or something like that? Um, also, you, most of you who just watch mainstream news media will never hear all of the fires that are happening. I mean, now there's jokes all over the place about built-in fireplaces right in the dash on these cars, because the fire hazards are huge, and it just came from the water meeting where we talked about how, you know, do we have enough water? Because what people don't realize, you've got to talk to the tow truck drivers, you've got to talk to the service station people, you've got to talk to EMC, and you've got to talk to the firemen, because those are the people that can tell you when you're going to make a decision about what to buy, what you should be buying. And if you talk to any of them, they'll all tell you the same thing, don't do it, because they're highly flammable, they take three times as much water to put out an electrical fire, and I just watched a whole bunch of videos, fireman training, where they explain how the, the heat comes up underneath those cars, it heats up the battery. Once they get to a certain point, they now have to have cold water applied for up to forty minutes to cool them down. Okay, that's a lot of water. So we know that most of these cars, they'll tell you a span of how many miles they can go, but not when they're running heat, charging radios, charging laptops, and they're being run with lights on the top. So you can guess, so you're probably going to get about half the usage of what they're saying. And I want our police department to not be gutted by a, a silly decision about what they're using for a vehicle. I don't want them to think, oh, I can't pull that person over because I got to go have my car charged. I want them to be able to do their job. And I think this is another way of, of hurting our public safety. We've watched over the last three years what's happened with public safety across the country, how it's been defunded, and how it's, how they can't do certain calls or they hit the media. Now we're going to put them in electric cars, which we know insurance companies are starting to not insure homes that are where they're charged there. They're starting to not, uh, want to insure these replacement of these when they burn. You're jumping in before all the facts are known, and you may personally be able to fit them into your life, but this is public safety, and I want their priority to be public safety, not how to make these new cars work out so that we can say it was a success. I sent you an article from electric buses in the cold, um, Midwest, and how they're all failing. They cannot keep them on the road. You know, I mean, anybody here who knows, if you keep your car outside and put a flashlight in the glove box, none lasts very long, does it? Okay, so there's. None lasts very long, does it? Okay, so there's no way I'm ever gonna have an electric car. So will I just be able to zoom by the police when they can't, aren't charged? Or will we have to pay them when they're sitting there charging during the day? Or will we have to have double the cars so that it can be charged while they're out working? I mean, I think what you're doing is you're gonna gut their capacity. And we already have that problem. So while you might be able to do it personally and Tim might drive to Florida and be able to stop and charge and read a book. That's not what we want our police department doing. We want them to be able to gas up and go. And, and they can't do that. Also, where's the cost of spinning up these charging stations at the police stations? And then where, where, then are we gonna need a full generator system for that building because we have to make sure they can charge? I mean, I think also what's coming is a usage fee for using the roads. Because right now, you're all skating by on tax credits. And you're skating by on rebates and electric. What's happening, what's gonna happen is the costs of this are gonna catch up. In other words, the insurance is gonna go up. The road fees are gonna come because you're not paying your share on the road, like the rest of us are in our gas tax. And so when that all happens, you're gonna be, you're gonna be well into this. And you're not gonna be able to get out because you're gonna sign a lease. So I ask you, please, do not test with our public money and with our public safety. Okay, because I'll be here to remind you that that was a bad choice. If you wanna do it yourself and save the climate, that's great. But while you're doing it, the rich are off jetting everywhere with their multiple ten thousand square foot homes. So this is really not about the environment. And also, I would ask any of you who are invested in any electric company. Or any solar or anything, any of these car dealers to recuse yourself from a vote if you have any investment. Uh, advantage or you're invested in anything that would be a conflict of interest, because I think that's very important for the public to know. Thank you. I need everybody to come out and let these folks know this is our money and this is crazy.
Thank you back for what you said. You said the chief said they're averaging fifty miles a day.
That's what I said, yes.
Um, what, what are they doing eight hours a day after not patrolling the streets?
I don't know, but he told me that a typical shift was fifty miles. That's what he told me.
That's bad information.
Isn't that what he said?
But the car's running all eight hours.
Fifty to a hundred.
It's not the miles. If the car is running with lights, laptop.
Well, but let me give you another kind of interesting data point. Um, so a couple of years ago, there was a big snowstorm that came up the coast. And it completely gridlocked, um, Washington DC to where they had to close the roads down with cars on it. And so all these cars are stranded out in the highway coming around, um, DC. And the gas cars, which they had to stay out there for like a day. It was, it was more than twenty-four hours. And the gas cars ran out of gas because they were trying to stay warm and they had to have their engines on and, you know, they, they were having problems. The electric car, when you, when you stop moving the electric car, that's where mostly electricity goes in, is moving the car. You can actually run those cars with their heaters for multiple days and you won't run through the electricity.
They have a total lot of those vehicles too.
Not the electric ones. They towed the gas ones. You go back and look at the facts.
Towed the electric ones.
Electric ones can go for days without. It is true. I've done it. I've done it several times myself.
Let's say yes on that, because I own a hybrid.
It's a totally different, uh, situation.
Same, it's the same concept.
Totally different situation.
I've go, I've driven before.
Right, but the hybrid's only designed to go twenty or thirty miles on a, on a, got electric only charge.
There's a reason why we don't run heat on batteries. We run heat on propane and gas because.
My car stays warm through the night when I run and I camp in my car. My car has a camp mode, so when I push it on camp, all the electric stays on for the night. And I've only done it once because I wanted to test it, because I was skeptical like you. I was totally skeptical. I said, there's no way this car can go overnight and leave me anything. And so I showed up at the beginning of the evening at two hundred and fifty miles and I stayed for eight hours in my car in February. This is the middle of the winter. And I spent eight hours in my car. When I got up the next morning, it only had used twenty or thirty miles.
Where, where, to ask you questions, where?
Up in Maine, northern Maine.
What time of year?
February. It was twenty degrees outside.
Does not, just because you camped in Maine one night does not mean that we should be using police cars electric because you have them.
It, the point is, the point is that it was twenty degrees outside. I know. It's, it is hard to believe.
It is. I think it's wrong because I have batteries outside and I camp.
And it's, it, it's not like a flashlight, okay? We, we aren't talking about a flashlight.
That's right. We're talking about dangerous lithium that does more damage to the environment than it.
And, and I'm quick to give you complete platform to agree with you. As I wrote, as I wrote to you.
Those of us that have seen those pictures of all the cars that are jumped because the batteries cost so much. We don't want you to use our public funds to do this. Let everybody else test it first.
All right, folks. We've discussed, we've discussed the electric car thing about as long as we're going to.
We've heard the same discussion twice.
We've heard the same discussion. We're gonna move on. Is there anything else on public comment that doesn't pertain to electric cars? Mr. Bailey?
Yes, I will change this up here. However, um, I, I know, I understand that the budget proposal is down at number fourteen, but Neil brought up and we've already allowed some. Conversation on the budget, so I wanted to throw in two cents. Uh, certainly I've been working on the budget a lot of years from the years of like men on. On the budget committee. Um, and, and I have to say personally, not as a budget committee person, but just personally as a branding tax group person. Um, I find it, uh, very scary, the thought of trying to pass a budget. Uh, north of thirteen percent. Uh, and it, it did seem to me that, that the night of the, the last meeting. When we got to the end, jumping the three hundred thousand dollars of paving. Um, in was relatively quick. Um, I don't have any problem with it being in the budget and it's in separate appropriation. But I, I would like to have the board, before you ratify the, the budget later tonight. At least consider the thought of making that number two hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand. Two hundred thousand would still be more than we've ever had. And that right there would shave three percent off the budget and ten percent's on the left hand and thirteen. And there's still one percent money that can help cover. And that would allow you to pave two of the three streets that were. Uh, asked for by T, uh, the public, sort of public works department. Uh, but I just really see a thirteen percent budget. In light of the school budget being kicked around at above fifteen and whatever. Uh, I mean, just gigantic chances of failure. And, uh, so I, I just think you should, I would like you to consider. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Back up to what, um, Doug just said. Everyone I've talked to all said they're voting it down. If you already know, I'm sure you've heard from people too, that they're gonna vote it down. Why would you pass a thirteen point four percent budget now if you already have a inkling that it might not pass? And in the paving, I think now isn't the time to do three hundred thousand. I would like to see two hundred thousand in the budget and a hundred thousand out of the one percent money. And then next year, add another hundred thousand to that line. So you gradually do it, not do it all at once. Because that would bring the budget down three percent by putting one percent of hundred thousand and the one percent. Out of that fund instead. That might help it pass just by going down three percent because it showed that you're listening to the taxpayer. That they can't afford thirteen point four percent where a ten point four might pass.
So Jan, I'm curious, um, when you talk to people and they say they're voting it down, are they specifying? I, I know the electric cars are an issue. Are they specifying? And is it the paving? Is it any other line items or department issues?
I never got into detail. They just said voting it down, voting the bond down, vote the school board down.
I know why that is. Nobody has any more money.
Well, yeah.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Is this not under item fourteen?
It is.
Yes. So can we not discuss it during?
Yeah.
The forum?
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have to do. Thanks.
Anything else that's not on?
The agenda.
Yeah, that's not on, uh, public comment. For public comment. It's not on the agenda.
Overdue this one.
I, I, I don't have a copy of the agenda. Um, I just, I. I had some comments on the, um, the plan at seventy seven. Is that coming later?
That's coming later.
And, and there won't be a time for comment on that. There's, the select board will actually be having a public hearing for that purpose. Um, but when we get to that, we'll talk about how that works.
But there'll be no comment at that time?
Not.
You said?
This.
Not at this meeting. So basically what is happening is now is the planning commission has done its step. It's turning it over to the select board. The select board will have a public hearing. At which point comments can be made at the public hearing. So, but we'll talk about that when we.
Hard to understand why it's on the agenda if there's no action.
It's a statutory required, it's a statutory requirement. Okay, so.
I just wanna say, uh, I also am concerned about a very large budget increase. It doesn't really matter to me what the contents are. It's too high.
And when we get to that on the agenda, we'll talk about that some more.
Right, but your public comment, right?
No, but if, if, if it's not on the agenda, it's on the agenda.
I apologize.
That's a, public comment is allowed all through the meeting, so, thank you.
Anything else that's not on the agenda? Moving on. Number six, announcing a planning commission vacancy.
Mr. Chair, there's a vacancy on the planning commission. The term ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So if folks are interested in that, um, they may submit. A letter of interest along with the cover sheet that appears on the town website. To me. And that, that will be at the next meeting would be the first available time for the select board to make an appointment.
Um, I would, uh. Raise a point for the select board, um, just in terms, maybe I'll make a motion. Um, I won't. That to fill the voting member vacancy. That we appoint Neil Silens, who is currently the alternate member. And who has been attending funding commission meetings and participating. And then announce the vacancy for an alternate member.
Do, do we know whose seat this is for on the planning commission? So you're making a motion to appoint someone to fill your spot? I see.
And we already had Neil.
Neil, Neil was an eyes, wasn't it?
So we sort of have a contingency plan for the remainder of this term?
Yes.
Um, well, he could, he could.
No, no, I'm stepping down as of next week.
Okay.
So he could continue as an alternate and fulfill his role as an alternate.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then we could find out if there's anybody else who's interested in being on the, on the planning commission. Because in fact, we always need interested people to come forward. And so, um.
So I guess my only, uh, counter is that as an alternate, he only has a vote if we don't have a quorum otherwise. Um, but, you know, by recognizing his service so far and making him a voting member to fill that empty space. And that's the motion I'd made. It currently has no second, so.
I'll second that.
Well, if we're gonna keep talking then, um, I, I think that it's, it short circuits our process a little bit. Because part of the way we do, um, openings is to announce it. And then we allow people to show interest. And then, um, after, uh, either one meeting or two, I forget whether.
I think it is.
Um, we then take the interest that we have and we make an appointment. And so I think, um, since, as you pointed out, it's functional the way it is now, because luckily we have Neil, who's willing to, um. Who is an alternate, um, he can still act in that role. And that way we keep our, our process intact.
Sure. And it has been my understanding within the past, the select board has chosen to shorten the process. By doing what I suggested, but if that is not the case, then that's not the case.
We've got a second. We've got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Um, I can see Tim's point. I think. Just going with sticking, sticking sort of by the book makes a lot of sense. Um. Meaning no disparagement to you, Neil, because I'm not trying to say that. I, I, it may likely be you who steps up because you've already been sort of doing it, but, um. Yeah, it makes sense to maybe. I, I don't know, to just go by the book, I guess, is my thought. Um.
Any other discussions? Not, we're gonna call a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Post?
Post.
I'm gonna abstain because I'm just not sure of the process enough. I'm sorry.
Uh, stormwater mitigation concerns.
That's Susan Benedict.
That's.
That's me. Um, I, I won't take up a lot of time here, um. But I would like the select board and the town. To look into a water mitigation com- um, committee. Uh, that it's under the select board. Uh, and the reason for that. Sort of came out of the fact that after the flooding. Um, I was very surprised that I had three visits from FEMA. They walked down Pleasant Street and said, you're still here. Because they expected to me that I would be in the river. Um, but fortunately, I had done my homework and I put in a French drain around my house. And I'm getting ready to put in another French drain. Um, and that's, that's, uh, that's my investment in my house. Um, but there are people above me on East Pleasant Street. And their backyards are just, just, they're just filled with water. There's just water and there's springs coming up and water coming up in the wintertime. And I know the, the roads department, they dug a big ditch. To route the water away from our houses, but it doesn't work. As is, uh, uh, as is apparent, because. I had to put in a French drain around my house. So I would ask. That as more water comes up through, uh, uh, the ledge, the slate. And I've seen that, uh, above me on River, uh, Street, that, um. The water is coming up from underneath. We have great resource down there. But we need to address that water coming up through the ledge. Uh, and I would ask that the, uh, s- select board, uh. Start a committee, no money. Nothing to it, um, but just people who are interested in water mitigation and prevention. In, for the entire town. And you know, that may include all the swamps and the quarries and. You know, we have a lot of water around Brandon, a lot of water. Um, so I would ask that the committee, um, talk about that and come up. The select board come up with a committee who will address that. And down the road, we'll be prepared, uh, because the water's coming. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Any staff, board? Anything?
Raise my hand.
Annie Strutton.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add into that, that I have for years. Because other people around me have changed the drainage off of their property. And I have increasing, uh, water problems as a result of that, to the point where my, uh. Basement is almost always flooded now. And I used to complain to the town about it and I was just dismissed. It was just not. Nothing we can do about that, kind of thing. I agree one hundred percent with Susan that we need to have some kind of a commission or committee. Looking at drainage issues in the town. Because every time somebody does something, even though theoretically they're supposed to take the impacts on their neighbors into account. That does not happen. And the town has not historically addressed those issues. And I think it's, especially with the additional pavement and. And I think especially with the additional pavement and people paving driveways and people raising what they think are driveways up so that they're the water is draining into other people's space. Uh, it's time for some concerted attention being brought on this issue while we can. Because it's not going to get better.
Shall I take a shot at a reply? Or did you have something you wanted to say?
No, go ahead.
I I hear you, Susan and Annie, and I appreciate your concerns. I think where I'm sitting, I'm trying to figure out the boundary between public and private. And and I guess I I'm not comfortable with creating a public committee that would be under the auspices of the select board. For overseeing this. I think if you have concerns, it sounds like you're looking for a group of people that might be interested in talking about this and you can always, you know, put something out there and ask people to come together and you can talk. But as far as as the responsibility of the town goes, until I find something that falls into the town's right of way or the town's jurisdiction, I'm I I don't see a role for us at this point.
Well, let me put it to you this way. I pay for roads that I don't use and I gladly pay for them. And that's a public good. The water coming down East Pleasant Street. It's like a river when we get the rains. That's not my problem. That's the town's problem because the road belongs to you. Okay, so. I don't, I don't, I'm not asking, I'm not asking the town, actually. That's not my idea. It's to have the town pay for the medication and the research. You know, my idea is we get our you know, our our stuff together and we go to FEMA. FEMA came down to my house after the flood and they asked me how I was doing because they knew even though I wasn't, you know, there wasn't water around my house, they knew the water was coming straight to me. And I told them, that's why I put in a French drain and I'm about to put in another French drain. And I'm not asking the town to do anything about it, but the water comes down East Pleasant Street. And that is a town problem. So if you think that water is not a town problem, then you need to take up all your paved streets. That's what I have to say to you.
Thank you.
I want to add to that, please. The water problem that I'm talking about is the water that is coming down Carver Street. For which no drainage has been provided. It therefore enters into people's driveways. And while I have my sort of driveway burned so that the water can't get in. It nonetheless comes into my property from the street. Uh, when I talk about neighbors who are changing their driveways, it diverts the water coming into their driveways off the street onto my property. And the part of the problem is that that modification was against the town ordinance that restricts people from changing the drainage patterns in in such a way that it drains onto neighbor's streets. So the town does have a role in both of those things. And Susan put it very well when she said that you can't just keep claiming that it's a private matter. When it's the streets that are caused and the failure of the drainage, town drainage, to deal with the problem. You do have a role. And it is your responsibility.
Can we ask the town manager for an opinion here? Because it seems that this is not a new issue of roads and drainage. And so is there a process, I'm certainly not aware of, that people have to appeal to our our highway foreman to ask about drainage issues?
Not to my knowledge. Would there be a process to appeal to the highway foreman about drainage issues? So on the bigger topic, I generally speaking think that citizen involvement is a great idea. I don't think necessarily that a committee of laypersons in this particular field is likely to strike out onto a promising solution. I mentioned in my update, my oral update to the town manager's report that I did speak with someone from the Army Corps of Engineers today about flood avoidance. And she mentioned that she is part of a team called the Silver Jackets, which I think we've dealt with before on the select board different times. And what they are trying to do is recognize the fact that there is like this whole mosaic of different federal and state resources available to communities. And it's very hard for communities with professional staff, regardless of, let alone without professional staff. It's very hard to navigate those kinds of resources and see what can apply to your community. So my, I I would welcome some citizen participation. I think that it will behoove that citizen group. If you decide to convene one, it will behoove that group to become connected with the Army Corps of Engineer and engineers and the State Department of the State Agency of Natural Resources. And basically use that vehicle as a way to express what conditions are, but not to attempt to suggest solutions outside of what they think would be, you know, an environmentally responsible and effective solution.
Well, I disagree with you on that. And if you'll, I've done a lot of research. I have gone to, it's called First Street, who has updated the FEMA maps before even FEMA bothered. So relying on public monies, yes, you're right. It it's it's a giant hole with nothing down there. But there are are foundations and nonprofits that are doing the work and have the science. And if you, you know, they just had a big conference and I watched the whole thing. It was two hours on Zoom. So I I object to this. I think that it it takes the citizens to motivate the select board. And I I really wish the select board would stand up and say, okay. Let's have a committee. Let's talk about this. Let's make it official. Let's just not pretend that it's, you know, just water coming down the street and not even going in to the water sewer system. Rainwater system. So I disagree.
Thank you. We've done, we're gonna take one or two more questions on this and then we're going to.
I just wanted to say that I doubt that there is a property owner in the town that hasn't had some impact on their property with the volume of water that we have had. And that's part of property ownership in many ways. I mean, if if she were to get her water mitigated, I got a lot of it on my property that ruins my hay fields. And it costs me a lot of money every year. And when the sewer system doesn't get treated and it goes into that creek and then it goes into my property and my hay fields like this last year and I had to spend four thousand dollars on hay. If one landowner in this town were to get reimbursed or had their water issue fixed, wouldn't everyone else want it too? And so we have to be very careful. I definitely have had impact, financial impact, inconvenience, all sorts of problems. Trying to manage livestock with the water that we've had. But it is part of nature and it has been excessive water this year. And so I just say to the select board, you're in a tough spot. I don't know exactly what the rules are, but I doubt if you start helping some, if you aren't going to be have your hands full because there's a whole lot of us that are going to line up next.
Thank you.
I have something to add, please?
Just a minute. Neil?
I think it would be a good idea for all of the affected citizens to get together and try and map out areas where there is excess water coming off of roads. And then they can present that to your Army Corps of Engineers and say, this is where we've had issues.
Thank you. One more.
I just wanted to say when I moved into this house, I did not have this problem. Uh, the town had put up sidewalk, extruded sidewalk that was six to eight inches above the street and the and the property adjacent on the downhill side. And that's when water started uh, coming in. In the meantime, that road has been paved. And now is above the level. That's why I had to burn my driveway. Um, yes, the water is getting worse and that's another good reason that the town needs to take a look at the drainage issues. The town does act on behalf of the citizens. And to not to fail to recognize that there are pre-existing conditions that are being aggravated by the increase in in the intensity of water coming down is to beg off your responsibilities. Uh, I think starting to look at what the dynamics are and what the options are for mitigating that. When they were putting in the drains for the upper part of of or for the uh, part of Carver. Apparently, they did not even consider the fact that there is water coming down Carver as like a river that that aggravated. Um, and there should have been a drain put on the little hill on the on the other side of the little hill. Uh, but it's it, they didn't and that water is combining with water coming off of people's driveways and down the river or down the down Carver. And it does look like a river at times. And that's not new. That's been going on for twenty years. Previously, I was able to keep my basement dry, but I can't now.
Thank you. We're gonna close this part of that. Is there anything from the board?
Not from me. And I guess the one thing I would say in this follows up on Neil's comment is if there are specific issues with public property that are creating water issues, that is something that perhaps our highway department could look at and look at terms of amelioration. Um, to the extent that water is coming from private property onto private property or bubbling up under private property. I don't think there's much of anything the town can or should do about it. I mean, Sharon's point is well taken that we live in an area surrounded by water. We're in a watershed. Many of our homes are in flood plains. And water just happens. Um, but to the extent that there's anything that our roads are contributing to and that we can fix, that may be something worth looking into.
And Neil, would you repeat what you said, please? Affected citizens, some basically somebody put an ad in the front porch form or something and get everybody who's worried about water flow off of the streets. And through their properties, get together so that we can begin to map out areas that are of concern and then present that to the Army Corps of Engineers. This is, by the way, this is not a new problem and it's not specific to Brandon. Every I would wager that every major municipality is dealing with the excess of surface runoff from the roads and roofs. One of the easy solutions is to use a permeable asphalt tone. So that it doesn't accumulate. It just percolates down into the soil.
Right. Thank you. Moving on to eight, consider request to close Park Street on April seventh.
Mr. Chair, there's a request in your packet from the Brandon Area Chamber of Commerce to close Park Street for an hour and a half on Sunday, April seventh, from one P M to two thirty P M as part of the weekend celebration of the solar eclipse. And some festivities around there.
It's Lord's pleasure.
I don't want zombies eating my brains, Bernie.
I was gonna say, only if you give me half day off work so I can go watch.
It's Sunday.
Oh, it's on a Sunday? Okay, then I'm good.
We have a motion?
I motion that I make a motion that we approve this request. Close the street for an hour and a half.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
How does the traffic get to the lakes or to Forest Dale or does it use High Street?
I just wanted to. What time will it be closed?
One to two thirty.
One to two thirty. And that's a, that's giving me extra, giving us extra time because you know how things go. But it's basically get them from the top of Park Street down to the exit on to the parking lot area from the Brandon Inn. Once they're free from there, Park Street will get opened right back up. It'll probably be much less than an hour. But we wanted to have a safe amount of time that we want to request it for, so we wouldn't be cutting it.
And why couldn't we use the green?
That's where it's going.
Yeah, I I haven't been paying attention to the eclipse and I don't know how much of the sun will be blocking Brandon, but is there any provision made for eclipse blocking sunglasses?
Actually, Monday.
Um, we have, we're gonna have at least a thousand already available for the, just for the townspeople here in Brandon. And we're the potential of twenty five hundred. We'll have, we'll have plenty of glasses available, absolutely.
You can also get them from Astronomers Without Borders. Has a service where you can get eclipse blocking glasses. And most people use them for seconds. And the the film that they use for them is good for years. And so they send out. You use them, you send them back and they send them to the next place that is going to have an eclipse.
I was I was concerned because it's my understanding that the blindness that's caused by looking at the sun is not immediately apparent. It doesn't show up for years.
Um, this is true. Also, having spared directly out a total eclipse as a child for this like that. My eyes were bad before then and they didn't get any worse. Although I did think that was gonna I follow the direction.
Uh, and and also to add to Bernie's thousand pair, the RAC department requested some additional glasses, well, there's another thousand that have been coming to the chamber for use for the events that are gonna be happening. It'll be ninety nine point eight percent eclipsed here. It won't be a complete total eclipse. But it will be something to see and understanding that too with glasses, it can be shared amongst family members, not spending the entire time looking up at that sun. Checking it and looking back down. And as we get closer to the eclipse, I know the RAC department plans on working with the chamber to do some messaging around safety and some preparation because if the weather does prove and working with our emergency management direction directors as well. Because it does prove that on the fifth of April that the weather looks to be perfectly clear and wonderful, that we are going to be inundated with folks uh, making last minute arrangements to come here and drive up here and potentially be one of these situations where you want to have enough gas and food because the roads can be impassable.
Yeah, and I I will tell you, having been in Oregon for the total eclipse in twenty seventeen, it's amazing how many people will come to a small town for a total eclipse and at ninety nine point nine nine, that's still pretty close. Um, so we should be prepared.
You're gonna vote a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, closed. Ten, approval of the draft. Or nine, I'm sorry, approval of the annual certification of by when.
Mr. Chair, you have the form. Uh, it is believed that there were no changes.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Ten. Prove the draft. Approve the town, the draft of the town plan for the purposes of scheduling a public, public hearings. Chef, Sueson, which one do you want that?
Oh, I can do it. Um, okay, so, um, as many of you know, the planning commission since October twenty twenty two has been working on updating the town plan, which is required to be updated every eight years. Um, you have to have a town plan in place, a current town plan in place to be eligible for state and federal funding grants, things like that. Um, the town plan is kind of a an aspirational document uh, from which the town then develops its policies and decisions. So, um, over the course of dozens of public meetings and and also we had community forums and stuff. Um, we gathered information from the town, we looked at the old town plan, and we drafted this new town plan. Uh, the planning commission had a public hearing last month where people, uh, were invited to come and make comments on the plan. Um, or to if they couldn't come, they were invited to send their comments by email. We received some comments. We, uh, amended the plan and the enhanced synergy plan, which is a separate document, but still part of the plan. We amended those in relation to the comments. Uh, last week, we approved it for transmission to the select board. The select board now has the draft plan. On tonight's agenda is simply a motion to approve that plan for purposes of a public hearing. And the public hearing, we're, we have a kind of tight, uh, timeframe in which to do a bunch of stuff, um, before the plan needs to be adopted. But, um, so uh, the select board at this point can approve the plan for moving on to a public hearing, or can choose to hold off on the approval to make its own amendments to it. Um, but by the seventeenth, it needs to approve it fully for a public meeting. The public hearing then will need to take place, uh, by January twenty third. Um. Um, well, no, sorry, back that that public hearing needs to take place by, uh, February seventh. Um, notice has to be gone by the third. So that's where we are right now in terms of what needs to be done on the town plan.
So the step that we need to take is to make a motion to approve the draft.
Purposes of a public hearing.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the draft of the plan for the purposes of a public hearing.
Go second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Will people have a chance to, um, make additional comments during the public?
After public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, the purpose of the public hearing will be to get additional feedback from the public above what we've already received over the last year and a half.
Will that be at one of these meetings or on a Monday night, or how will we know when that is?
We should set the date immediately.
That was true. Yeah, um, it it's normally separate from a select board hearing. Um, and announcements, uh, were required by law to place announcement in the newspapers of record. Um, uh, also to post it the way we post everything else. Um, but if we set the date tonight, we'll know tonight.
And is there a reason for the urgent timeline?
Be so. Um, the last town plan was adopted in, uh, February twenty second, twenty sixteen. And state law requires it to be readopted every eight years. Uh, when I came on the planning committee in October twenty twenty two, uh, I realized along with the rest of the committee that no one had realized that that was when it was due. They thought that it wasn't due until twenty twenty seven because they'd made a small amendment in twenty nineteen. So we started off behind the eight ball, and we've been trying really hard to like get it through. But yes, in 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 the best of all possible worlds, it wouldn't be on this compressed schedule. Um, so and and that is reflected in the plan as well, unfortunately, so.
Thank you for your honesty. Was, um, so once you have the public meeting and then the public makes their comments, if there's an edit to be made, then does the select board have the opportunity to make a change to the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and so and then once those edits are made, then the select board has to reapprove it.
Okay, thank you.
Tim.
I think that's where I was going as well. So we're gonna have an initial approval tonight for, um, having a public meeting, and then we're gonna have a final approval at the end of that process when the select board is actually going to.
Um, right.
Confirm our.
And so through the process of the public meeting and then individual select board review, taking into account the comments received debating. Um.
Yeah, I I I'm good with that.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I'm, like I said, it's unfortunate. We're on a very compressed timeframe, but we do what we have to do.
Right.
Do you have another question?
That's a stupid question. Oh. Um, if this is only getting done every eight years, why is there a planning committee, um, and filling the vacancy in all of it?
Oh, because the the planning committee is also in charge of, um.
Land use ordinance.
Land use ordinances. Um, in most towns, they also do the capital planning, um, which is currently being handled by our, uh, town management team because the planning commission has the the land use ordinance redo and the, um, town plan redo just kind of all at once. Um, but, uh, land use stuff kind of is is an ongoing thing. And also, again, in the great scheme of things, as soon as this twenty sixteen town plan is adopted and approved and enacted, we start thinking about, well, how are we gonna change it eight years from now? So there's always something for the planning committee to do. So if you're interested.
All right, we'll vote to motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Closed.
So on my, on my timeline, the last date would be February second, what's that?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Um. So I'm just going to show the board how you feel about whether you'd want to.
I can do a Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
But but.
I mean, I just wanted to do the last day.
Fifth Monday this month. Do you want a fifth Monday, January twenty ninth?
Yeah. Because I just wouldn't want to do it on the last possible day because winter in Vermont is.
Yeah, there's a snowstorm. You screwed. That's how it goes. So January twenty ninth, so it was locked.
Fifteen days, right?
Do the public notices by the fourteenth.
Something in that range, yeah.
So the twenty ninth is the date that you're throwing up there?
It's just a thought. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. What time do you want to do it? Seven o'clock is fine.
Six.
Seven is usually usually a little earlier for those.
It's, um, really.
You're here. I'll be there when it was time.
Seven, so I can I can make this. Like, yeah, which is selfish.
So because it's a hearing, it doesn't even actually technically require a forum of the select board.
Right.
Right.
Though it's certainly helpful to be there to hear.
Yeah, if I, I'll just be candid that I like seven because I like to eat dinner with my kids first. That is selfish. I will.
Um, it's a reasonable, um, request.
Have have the previous, um, work sessions, have they garnered a lot of, uh, public participation or not so much or?
Not so.
Not so much. Seven might be fine.
Yeah. Okay, so in talking amongst ourselves, um, I move that we set the date for the public hearing on the town plan for Monday, January twenty ninth at seven P. M.
Second, yeah, go ahead.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed.
Thanks for letting me eat dinner with my kids, guys.
Okay, you heard it first. Monday, January twenty ninth at seven is the public hearing.
Number eleven. Hold on. Turn that to Cecil also.
Oh, yeah. So, um, the in the packet is my stat at the select board report for the town report. Uh, I will not lie, it's baldly plagiarized from the last few, um, reports, and there's a big blank in it for the outcome of the budget. Um, because we haven't voted on it yet. Uh, but, um, I just wanted the rest of the board to take a look at it and let me know if there's any changes that they want to make to it.
Thank you for doing that, Cecil.
Yes, thank you.
Um, it all looked fine to me with the understanding that the budget is still a question.
What do you want that blank to be filled with? What was the?
Uh, you have the word that. I mean, I think you mean the this results or proposed budget of and then an amount, right?
Um, so the 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 last one, um, it says like this involved a proposed budget that, and then there was some philosophical discussion, um, before it got to the numbers.
I see.
That's where the that in front of the blank come. I mean, I'm more than happy to just say the proposed budget of X amount. Um. Uh, then we could say which reflects I mean, sets letter to the newspaper, I thought was a fairly concise, um, discussion. I could probably use some of the text from that.
Often, um, it gets expressed like a proposed budget of X comma with such and such to be raised by taxes to differentiate that from the big number of spending.
Right.
Um, and maybe just adding one sentence that, you know, a change is that we are are or, I mean, I suppose Doug had brought up the idea of not, but if we are including paving, which is a change, we should just make note of that. Because that's a substantial um, difference in previous budgets. From previous, it's just. Um. Just that, you know, that big amount is in there versus separate.
Well, this is something that we can all look at, and you don't need an answer right here tonight.
We 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 gotta get this over to the printer.
I thought it was gonna ask one though.
We're super.
So, um, and and so the difficulty with something like this is, um.
I mean, I was good with it right up to this.
The inclination is like, send something about, have you all edit it and send back to me, but under open meeting, open meeting laws, you can't really do that. And so it's Laura, I bring it to you. If you see any glaring problems with it, you can let me know, or if there's something in the text that's there. Otherwise, um, I am comfortable just filling that hole with a proposed budget of X with X amount to be raised by taxes.
I'm comfortable with.
I I think the the what you, um, referred to a moment ago with the philosophical verbiage is is much more important than your than you realize. This is basically the first time our it's our our first chance to communicate with a taxpayer to convince them that the budget that we are asking for is what we need. And it isn't just made up numbers, and it isn't just, um, uh, being, uh, um, spend thrift with or or, um, spend waste. Um, it's 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 really our chance to, um, to defend, um, the number, and and I think that that needs to be in that paragraph.
Okay, hang on just a second. So, I mean, this is just. So you can let me know, um.
I mean, it's it's really to to, if I can, um, uh, help you understand the, um.
Oh, no, I understand.
Well, what I was getting at, where I was getting at was that, um, during our presentation at town meeting, typically the select board chair and one or two others um, present the budget, uh, in a, in a, in a process that allows us to, um, put our best foot forward with this is why we're asking for this much money, and we often give examples or we we try to, um, uh, promote the the support for the budget. And I think this is a, this is a micro version of that, is that this is basically for people that don't get to our our session prior to our town meeting. Um, this is their chance to get that summary in in a nice bite-sized chunk.
Precisely. And so what I was looking for was the text from last year, so that you could perhaps make suggestions about what this year's text should be like in that in that light. And of course, the way our website is set up.
Yeah.
I'll get it up so two years. Well, it's a.
See, I think the difference is last year we weren't asking for as much of an increase, and so this year it's really beholden on us to address concerns right at the front of this. Um, for why this is so much.
Um, if you would like to take a stab at that.
Well, actually, I think it's the version of it's the role of the chair, and so I'm leading it to the chair.
He's gonna convince us. And he says the nice words.
Yeah.
Well, then I shall go stab at it since I offered to do it for the chair.
If I'm allowed to help you, I'll help you. Long as we don't have a third Cecil. You can text me and yes.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
I promise no traction, just bad experiences. Brad's been.
Well, when do you want, um?
When you need it.
As soon as you can. Yeah. He's, uh, the layout person's planning to, right now, she's planning to attend the next select board meeting because that's when you're gonna finalize the warrant, the warning. And she's planning to like kind of type it in as you're making any changes and submit it to the printer who requires it the next morning.
Okay, do you have a work count or does it?
She said, I think she's pretty flexible.
Okay, um, I'm getting my tires changed tomorrow, so. Okay. Another morning.
So we're good on that?
Working group of two. How about the, uh, Mr. Chair, the dedication, the town report?
Right. Anybody? Any thoughts on that, sort of dedication?
Um, you have a list going, don't you say?
I sent you some names to consider, yeah.
I, I maybe I didn't.
Kinda need to coalesce on something.
Yes, I'm sorry. Was that?
Did I get him?
I. Dennis Martin.
Mm hmm.
Right? That's.
You sent it, yeah, that's it doesn't ring. I'm really sorry. I'm drawing the blank on that, so.
That the ones I got were. Notice, I don't know, just that we gardening. So. Hmm. Um. I am happy to move that. Oh. Can we do it as a?
I mean. We're in public session, so speak right up.
Thinking out now.
Yeah, I know. It's not the way we did it last year.
I think I know. I think in the past, it's probably been done at budget workshops.
I think, yeah, I guess we did last year, wasn't it?
I think we've done it at budget workshops.
Yeah. Be occupied.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, I'm I'm glad that we dedicated the town report to this one.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Instead of buttering us us up with fancy words at the town meeting, why can't we say we can't control our spending or save money?
Because we can control our spending.
Does that be more honest to the people?
Being honest is saying we work through how much money we need, and we're gonna ask for how much money we need.
How much have you saved? Is there any in the account?
Well, we're gonna call it a question.
We're gonna call the question. We're gonna call the question. All those in favor for having Dennis. Uh, the report. Uh, dedicated Dennis. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just have it. Chimney repair and boiler replacement for the town hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a one page of recommendation in your packet, um, the Northwest chimney on this building was damaged. Uh, Bill Moore arranged some emergency repair, which have prevented further water coming into the building. Dennis Martin. Uh, provided volunteer labor to clean up the water that did come into the building. We went, uh, with our insurer, we have the settlement in hand. And, uh, as we've gone out to try to replace the chimney, because this is the only chimney that's still taking a heating appliance on it. They insist that it be lined and the lining, because the chimney is so tall, is almost nine thousand dollars. My proposal is that you don't line the chimney. But, uh, restore it to its adherence, so it'll match the other three chimneys. Abandon its use. As an active chimney and use the insurance settlement to. Replace the. Nineteen ninety-seven oil boiler that heats the lower level with a brand new propane boiler that can be direct vented without the chimney.
It's a gorgeous pleasure.
Um, I, I make a motion that we, um. Um. That we follow Mr. Hopkins' plan except for, um, replacing the propane boiler. I would like to see a, um, a heat pump, um, hot water heaters. Um, they make them, they work well and, um, I think that. Uh, I'll make my motion and then we'll talk about it. So my motion is that we have the plan as Mr. Hopkins stated, but with a replacement of the propane boiler with a heat pump boiler.
Do you have a second?
I'm gonna second it for discussion purposes.
Um. I have understood during that really cold snow. Anybody who. Went to the Chamber of Commerce dinner.
Oh, I remember that.
And they were relying a lot on heat pumps can remember that the heat pumps weren't working. Um, I like the idea of having two heat sources as much as I. Love the idea of heat pumps, I just like the idea of having. Not all of our eggs in one basket, so I. I feel comfortable with Seth's original plan.
So, um.
What is the cost of, um, heat pump? Water heater?
I don't have an exact cost, um, I'm pretty sure it's less than the propane boiler. Um, I, I, I will say that the, um, the plan that you just authored calls for fuel switching. And, um, and calls for transitioning to electric, um, in all of our, wh- whenever we can. And typically when you buy a new appliance, that's the moment when the switch makes the most sense. Because these are designed to last twenty or more years. And so. This is a particularly timely juncture when we have insurance money, so it's, it's paid for. And. We have the opportunity to switch fuels.
So. Um.
It is a fuel switch from oil to propane, which is less carbon.
That's true.
And, and I, I guess, I, my question is, I don't know how, I know how propane boilers work. I don't know how heat pump water heaters work, um. Can you, I mean, is it, uh?
Yeah, it actually works in the same way that the air to air does, is that it's basically taking heat out of the air and putting it into the water. Um, and in, if you ask efficiency Vermont, they will show you studies that show that that's the least expensive way. To create hot water right now. And so, um, they, they, they're a tank, they have a, a, a heat pump on the top of it and it heats up the water in the tank.
And then how does that heat the builder?
And then the same way a, a boiler does, is once you have a tank of hot water, it gets piped through the, um, the.
The radiator.
The radiators along the wall. And if it's sized properly, it keeps up properly because it's, it's just a function of how many BTUs that it puts out. Because every heat source puts out a certain number of BTUs by how much fuel you put into them. Same way with any kind of, of, of gas or oil or propane furnace.
Neil?
Um, I would suggest that this discussion is premature without knowing how much a heat pump boiler costs.
So I didn't.
Experience with residential boilers is heat pump boilers are quite a bit more expensive.
Hmm.
I didn't wanna prolong the, um, process of making the selection unduly. Because we've had to have several repairs to this fuel oil boiler, as you'll recall.
Hmm.
Uh, in this heating season and getting quotes even for propane boilers has been exceptionally. Time consuming. And I, I really am not convinced that. A heat pump appliance that's drawing its warm air from air that you've heated in the building. I'm not convinced that that is. Prudent.
One is, what's the, um? One would, if we went with your, one would the installation take place?
Um, so Pluff indicated that they could do it, you know, in the next couple of months.
Bill?
I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that the, the town applied. For municipal energy residency program, um. Grant program and one of the buildings that they identified was the town hall, um, and that, and, you know, I. Or the major team, I, I agree with, uh, Seth's assessment about getting this replaced as quickly as possible so we can abandon. Low furnace and, and commence with the work, work and sprint when the contract can get here. And that perhaps the MERC grant, um, if and when we do get that MERC grant, um, that. The possibility of electric, electric boilers, whether it's through heat pumps or instant on hot water. Could be investigated and possibly rolled into. That.
Here, man, we're gonna call the question.
So if this building is used as an emergency shelter. How big is your generator? If you're gonna have everything electric heat pumps. What are you gonna heat this building with if we don't have power for three days, which has, has happened in this?
That this building will never be the emergency shelter.
It won't.
This is the wrong building, it has no generator, it has no parking, it has lots of problems. We'll use the Legion or the school.
Okay.
So before you call the question.
But I think what she's saying is it'll. If, if you wanted to put a generator on this building to ensure that it would be heated, you would need a much smaller generator to. Fire to do a propane burner.
Yeah.
So if, if you'll allow me with the information that Bill just pointed out, because, um, I, I actually have, um. Some experience, my cousin has a, um. Uh. Uh. Um. Hot water system, a, a heating system that uses hot water that's heated with an instant hot water heater. And so rather to capture the essence of what I intended was, would be to, um. Amend my, um, motion to say that, um, that we go with an electric. Um, hot water heater and that leaves open either. A, um, a heat pump hot water heater or an instantaneous one, because both of those are, um. Are equally valid options to let us fuel shift, fuel shift out of fossil fuels. So, um. Can I, can I make that amendment? To my own emotions, I would like an amend, to amend my motion to say electric, um, heat, um, hot water boiler. And not just heat pump.
Electric.
Electric boiler.
Got that, Shirley?
I got it.
But I need a second.
I try to use second to the amendment.
Yep.
No second? So what happens that?
So the amendment fails, but you still.
Right.
Alright, we're gonna vote the original motion, you wanna repeat the original motion?
Changed. I just changed that to electric boiler. So you would. Your original motion was?
To, um, accept Seth's, um, plan with the, uh, change from the propane boiler to a heat pump boiler. And we're ready to vote.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Of using, see, of Seth, of.
The origin.
Nay.
Two to three, Shirley, did you get that?
What's that?
I just wanna make sure Shirley got the right vote count.
Four to one.
Two to three.
Oh.
It was just slow.
Oh, okay.
What would you say? I said aye. So the motion fails.
Motion failed.
Yep.
We did too. Yep.
Now we need a motion. Or.
Of some other code.
What's that?
Any kind of motion is in order.
I would. I'm gonna make a motion to accept Seth's recommendation. To go with the propane. Fire boiler, exchange what we got, which would be. Direct venue, just in.
Second.
Okay, so for discussion, I would suggest that what Bill just brought is this possibility of the MERC grant coming through. And that there might be money and options, and since we're talking about the spring. Um, the possibility that we would not decide anything now would allow us to, um. Find out if that MERC grant comes through and would also allow me to look into, um. You know, the, um, the pros and cons of, um, fuel switching, um. It's just a point of discussion.
Yep.
It would also then be helpful to have. Numbers.
Yeah.
Will give us.
Yeah.
Alright. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair. Um, professional, my professional judgment to share with the board is that that boiler is giving us all kinds of signs that it's tired. And I really. I, I think that. It, it doesn't make a lot of. Well, how many times have they been here this winter, three or four?
Three or four at least, and it's not one year.
They keep bandaid. If I'm.
Not cheap.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they keep bandating it, bandating it together to. Get through the next.
Not, not cheap.
Cause we're all sitting here wearing our stores. And.
Alright, we're gonna call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can you repeat over and, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
It's Seth's original plan.
Seth's original plan.
Okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I need to see.
Nice job. Allocation of ARPA funds for the town hall roof. That you again.
That's me again, um, at previous meetings, we had talked about. The desperate need to, um. Uh, replace the town hall roof, um. The magnificent building, it has an equally magnificent long wiki roof. We got bids, um. And the time we talked about dedicating. The remainders of ARPA funds for the town hall roof. But, uh, put it off until after the budget, uh. Season, and so budget season is over and so I would like to move that we allocate the. Remaining ARPA funds that we have, which I believe are two hundred and forty-nine.
Two sixty-one, seven, twelve.
Thank you.
Let me just do it without a number because that's gonna keep changing.
So I, I would like to allocate the remainder of our ARPA funds to the replacement of the town hall roof. With the understanding that we have, um. A grant. Uh, application being considered right now from, for historic preservation of municipal buildings. That could, um, pay for a significant chunk of that, in which case. Money we've allocated but not spent, we could then use for something else.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I found out today that the original cost for installing the slate roof on the town hall was. Four hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents.
In eighteen.
Alright.
Eighteen sixteen.
Um, I'm gonna have the discussion as it.
They still in business.
What was, uh, what was our?
Let's call them.
What, what was the price? Today. From, I mean, not today, from.
The lowest bid we.
The lowest bid that we received.
Two sixty, wasn't it?
I think two sixty-nine was.
Person that charged.
I think the number was in the two sixty-nine.
Hoping for, for a bid from the person who charged four twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did it come through Seth, no bid?
They're probably not.
It was two sixty-nine.
Yeah, it's very close to what we have left in the ARPA money.
And. If we redock it, which more than likely will happen.
It's another thirty-eight.
That's another thirty.
Thirty-eight, thirty-six.
Thirty-six thousand, thirty, someplace between thirty and forty thousand. So that puts us up to almost three hundred thousand for a roof on the town hall. I. Don't have a problem spending some ARPA money on the roof of the town hall. But. Being that the solar is going out. As a bond vault. I don't think that we need the sixty thousand. Dollars in the solar, in the solar fund. So. I would. Support a motion. It brought. The sixty thousand dollars that was given to the solar. Put back into the ARPA. So it will cover the. Complete cost of the town hall roof, otherwise than that, I. I'm a no.
Can I give two observations?
Yep.
One is. I would recommend we wait to hear back from the historic preservation grant. To see if we win the grant. Understand what I'm saying? With, with this much money available, not the whole thing available. We're going for a grant for gap funding, right?
Right.
So we have this much, the whole thing's that much. If we have this much, there is no gap to fund.
Right. I see what you're saying. So it makes no sense to simply allocate what we have.
Yeah, and my second observation is, um. We need to work with the bond bank to recalibrate what the solar array bond would look like. If we don't put the sixty thousand into it. It can be done, but like it should be done in an orderly way.
I, I think, I mean, and, and my understanding. Was kind of like what Seth was getting at, that. We have almost enough left in. ARPA. To do the roof. And the historic preservation grant fills in all the holes, and so any worry about not having enough. After this allocation, hopefully that grant. Will come through and if not, then we think again about. The other sources.
So that was my question, what are you gonna do if you don't get the grant?
Cross that bridge and we get there.
But in the meantime, we've allocated to, you know, you said to me about it, you know. Moving target, but that's.
There was some discussion before that our purpose gonna, or the federal government was gonna ask for the silver money back.
There's a potential clawback, yes.
So. Rather than committed to. The roof. Put it into something else. Like, uh, I don't know, historic Brandon Preservation Society, something, something, something.
Well, it can't get clawed back if it's allocated. So.
And it, it has to be allocated in something that can be used, but it would not, no longer be available, so you could have a bigger gap. Does that make sense?
Then you really, really, really have to use it in, for the purpose that you're allocating it for.
Right.
So, one of the reasons we couldn't re-categorize the four thousand and thirty-five dollars that was initially spent from the ARPA. Is that it's already been reported, like there's no, no changes on that one, just because you came up with some other money. So if you allocate all the remaining ARPA to the Brandon Historic Preservation, whatever you decide. It's got to be spent for that purpose.
I thought you could put that into like, uh. General fund or.
You can put it into fund balance.
Fund balance.
But, but it. And I, I came up with that main for the fund kinda.
Yeah.
Up the end of my sleeve, but it sounds like it's something that could be used for the roof if we needed to.
So the way that, and, and Seth will correct me if I'm wrong about this, but based on my reading of the information. Is that if we don't allocate it to a specific project and instead allocate it to a. Fund, it has to be a fund that already exists, we can't create a fund for that purpose. And put the money in it to avoid the clawback, um, it's like, I don't know if it's familiar with the Medicaid five, you look that. You know, it's kinda like that thing, it's like, yeah, if, if you do something with your money. And the government wants it back, it's gonna look at what was it that you did with your money and does it count? As legit as far as they're concerned. And with this, putting it in an established fund is legit, creating a fund for it is not.
Then, then if we have a fund that could theoretically be used for the roof, if we need the money for the roof later. And I'm not trying to rewrite it, you're just trying to find ways to. Make it so that we have a bigger gap to fill with the grant and a smaller.
Well, I mean, the, the.
Largest that grant will fill is a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's got a ceiling.
We're unlikely to get that much, um, and so. You know, putting it all aside and saying, we need to do this roof, it's gonna cost us two hundred and sixty some thousand dollars. Please give us a hundred thousand dollars and we'll come up with the rest.
I, I think we've been talking about um, using the Sarpa money for the roof, and um, I think we should call the question and see if that's still the way the board feels.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let you go.
I, I, I would agree with Tracy. Cause you don't know when the next leak is gonna happen on our roof, and you've got the floors down, protect the floors, protect the investment.
I'm gonna call the question. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Did you, did you see Heather?
Heather's up nine.
Three, you said it.
Three, two.
Yeah.
Yes, that we should move ahead with allocating those funds.
Alright, fourteen, adoption of workshop, workshop draft. I guess we need a motion and we can open it for discussion.
I make a motion that we adopt the workshop drafted fiscal year twenty five town operating budget proposal for purposes of discussion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's open for discussion.
Um, so I'm, I'm gonna go back to a question that um. I asked Jen and I think Sharon, you also had some input on, and it, and it just had to do with. The reasons people are voting no on the budget, um, and the numbers they're seeing and. Um. I know, one thing I heard was, well, it's just a really big number, and, but, but I think. For me, in terms of trying to figure out if there's a way to carve that number down, it's helpful if people. Do have. Objections to specific line items or specific issues, it's just easy, cause otherwise, I'm just kind of like. You're right, it's a really big number. Where do you think we should, Sharon?
Well, this is just my opinion, but it's too large of an increase, and I think that the default is gonna be for people to vote no. Um, for me, it's also about the content of what's in the budget and, um. You know, I understand that. We have at least one select board member who would like to move everything under the sun to electrics, but he apparently hasn't seen my electric bill. Uh, I wouldn't want anything to be more, so if you include electric police cars that I believe would threaten public safety or put it at risk, I will absolutely vote no. And I will do everything I can to spread the word in town, also to vote no. We need public safety to be reliable and we can't be testing there, we can find some other place. But thirteen percent budget, that much paving. No, we've gotta be, you've gotta be more careful with public's money. Okay, I'm not saying they aren't needy things, but you know, we all want more than we have. But we don't get to do, we don't just, just get to spend what we want, so you have to spend responsibly, and so you have, that's what you're elected for. Is to make those choices and to, you know, be good fiduciaries, you know, um. Representatives for us, and I don't feel a thirteen percent budget and three hundred thousand in paving and electric police cars is any of that, so for all those reasons. And there's maybe even more, I don't even know, I have to learn about when I get the book. Um, but it's not a responsible pendant spending plan, given the, what, what the public is feeling.
So, um, on the subject of the paving, so that's three percent of that. Um, number, the thirteen number.
Nine.
Ninety seven.
Almost.
Is paving?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand.
Close, yeah, nine, ten.
Nine, nine percent.
Is the paving, so in the past. The paving was done as a separate vote, as an appropriation.
Yeah, oh yeah, it, what I, what I refuse to do. And I'll refuse, and I'll, I'll fight it right to the last minute. Right to the very last. For the past several years, anything that got done for paving. Was put into an appropriation. As far as I'm concerned, that's a smoke and mirror tactic. You people, if, if we took the nine percent out of that, that would give you a four percent budget increase. So, people would vote for the four percent. The smoke and mirror part is if that gets put into an appropriation. We up here as a select board sitting pat ourselves on the back and we only raised the taxes four percent. But we put the paving that we, that should be in the budget. There should be a budgeted item every year. That goes into an appropriation. Well, nobody's gonna vote down paving. So. We made a four percent budget, but you as a general voting pub. But which is, well, we want paving, so we're gonna vote that in. Your tax just went up to thirteen percent. Um, that's why. That I had fought it for eight years to have it put in. To. A. Into the budget, um. And I will fight for the. I will fight for the three hundred thousand dollars. And that's not enough. Not to keep up with what, everything that we've got going, the need, that should be kept up. Um. Anything less than the three hundred thousand dollars in the budget. I am probably gonna be a no, um. I know there's one percent money, it was mentioned earlier with a couple hundred thousand and a couple hundred thousand one percent money. We keep adding, we keep adding everything we're gonna take out of this one percent money. I don't think we have a, I don't know as if we have a good. For the next two years. On. Grants. And I know that, I know that uh. They're scoping grants, but I've never seen the town of Brandon. Turn away a, a grant after we've done the scoping study. Um, so, I'm. Probably. Until I had a definite figure on what there was for one percent money. I'm, I'm stuck at the three hundred thousand on the, on the paving. I think there was some other places that we could cut. Some of the budget, um. I don't think we're gonna cut it. Three percent. But. Um. We all came it up.
Thank you, Tracy, for being.
Pretty much original agreement.
Thank you for being full disclosure.
I'll, I'll, um, just add that I initially had been, um. Reluctant to consider. Adding the paving in. For a couple reasons, one was that it just looks like a big increase. Um, which is just. Hard pill to swallow, cause when you see that, you're like, well, yeah, start cutting something because that's a big increase, so, you know, but. When, what I understood. That Tracy was proposing was not. Well, one year we're gonna have three hundred thousand, the next year the federal government gives us X amount, so it's down to one hundred thousand, it's up to three hundred, like, cause that's just. We're gonna be having the same. Increase conversation every other year forever, which, tell you what, that sounds like torture. Um, on both ends, the paying, like, the taxpayer part of me and the select board member part of me, um, both, but, um. When, when I understood that what Tracy is talking about is a steady three hundred thousand. Or. Maybe I'm a, I think that Jan and Doug both raised a really good point, but maybe you do two hundred thousand, and I liked Jan's point of. Then let's increase it again next year, because right now we had two tough pills to swallow, which was that. One was that. We had used some money. From a different fund to balance the budget previously, so no matter what we did. It was already a three percent increase. So like, we were already starting. There. Um. I think in, including the budget, and then just knowing on the years that the federal gives, government gives us more money. Great, I think we can find places to use it, but to just have it steady. Um, and my, what I. Had said several times during the process was like, we just don't, like, roads. And cars that our town uses should not be surprises to us when they need to be replaced, or when they need to be fixed. We know that roads need to be maintained, we know that cars need to be fixed. Or replaced and rotated, and I hate the feeling. Of going, what we need, how many new cars at once, well, that was not a surprise, we know. You know, the police chief could tell us how many miles they want to day, so we would then know. Well, we can expect that at X number of miles, we're on the bonus years, and if we wanna push it, sure, but quite frankly, I don't wanna be the one that. Calls the police and they say, well. Sorry, that car just, you know. We, we really drove it till it's dead and now we can't come, which I don't think would happen, but. Has, oh, never mind, could happen, so, um.
You should be buying at least one police car every year.
That would be my thought, because then you're always.
Five year max.
Cause you're gonna have a five year plan, which for a car that you need in a hurry, sure, I don't know, I'm not a mechanic, I'm not saying how often, but I would just like to see a rotation. Yeah, that's what I thought too. So, I had understood it to be much less, so. I. I really, it took me a bit to come around to seeing Tracy's point of view, but I, I actually really like the one number. For the same reason when you're saying, like, it's, it feels, um. My concern was that it would be one number one year, a different number the next year, if it is a steady number for paving.
I think the problem with the notion of a steady number is it somehow implies that the roads are all gonna pay attention to that, and it seems like what we've done has been responsive to our road foreman. And if our road foreman says he needs more money, and he gives us good reasons, and he's convinced Tracy, and he's convinced me. That this is not um, spending money, uh, you know, haphazardly, this is money that he's asked for to take care of our roads. Now, maybe there'll come a time when he doesn't need that much, and um, he may come to us and say that he's, the roads are in pretty good shape and we can actually tie that back, or. Maybe he'll come and say, actually, the roads are falling apart in some places and I need more. And, and, and the point is that just saying you want it to stay the same ignores reality. And so I'm suggesting that let's respect our road foreman. At, see what he's asking for, do our best to smooth out, you know, taxes to the degree we can, cause that's part of our fiduciary responsibility. But um, I think what we've done in our process with this asking for three hundred thousand is. Um. The right thing.
I agree, and, and I should say, I agree with, there will be a little variation. On a year where, oh my goodness.
And to finish out.
Well, what I understood Heather to be saying was, was that. She understood. From Tracy's discussion, the road foreman had said, we need at least three hundred thousand dollars a year, or he said four, actually.
Yeah.
A year, and that what we had chosen to do by putting it into the budget instead of an appropriation one year. For a lot of money, and then the next year relying on the federal government kind of seesawing back and forth. That this way, by putting it in the budget at three hundred thousand dollars a year, or based on what. The road foreman said in annual cost would be, that that is what makes sense.
Hmm.
Um, and so, and, and I agree, I mean, I think that yes, it makes the budget number look. Shocking when you look back at the budget numbers from previous years, but then when you. Loop in the fact that there was a separate appropriation that also goes to people's taxes, then it ends up, you know. It's just all in one place instead of two different places.
And, and I will also add that um, over the five years I've been on the board. Um, I have worked really hard to always keep the taxes down, even when I've been told, oh, we should have them go up at a consistent way, because people wanna see like a steady rise, and even though we don't need that much, let's just keep it steady, and I said, no, if we don't need to ask for it, don't ask for it. But by the same token, that means when we get to a year like this year, when you need to ask for more, I think if you look at the last five years, we've been really frugal. And this is not a spendthrift budget, this is, this is needs that we have in our town, and um. It's a fair ask.
Actually, I just, I disagree with you, Tim, I will vote no, because the budget was an increase of thirteen point, thirteen point four percent. Does not have the taxpayers of our community in mind, as a select board, we have a responsibility to do better. This is not a responsible, affordable budget. But what I said, a lot of what I said in the budget committee. People didn't wanna hear. And if that's what you guys want, that's fine, I will be a definite nope.
I think Ryan will get a lot of support from the taxpayers on that.
Well, we also have to take into consideration, yes, the state of mind, you've got back in session. They wanted to raise their taxes eighteen point seven percent. Thirteen point four here, the school budget is twelve, that's almost forty five percent. That's a lot of money for taxpayers. For an hell of an increase.
Good. Yeah, but for a lot of people that didn't come to the, the meetings, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points to drive the numbers, um. First up, last year. The decision was made to buy down the budget by a hundred thousand dollars from reserve. Which was great for last year, because we had the excess money in the account, we, our reserve fund. Would totally flush as high as it ever happened. What that did to going into this year, we'd be starting off indirectly a hundred thousand. Below, so if we increased our budget to normal. Four percent this year, it's four percent plus that hundred thousand with the taxpayers to contribute. And a hundred thousand equals approximately eighty percent, so right away we were starting three percent in the hole. From a, a certain way, it's not that the money was missing, it's that if we go up at the same line, that's what that's gonna create. Secondly. We have done appropriations for the, the paving, and I agree with Tracy and agree with the board, it. It's just two different ways to, to, I don't wanna say sell it, but tell the taxpayers what they're doing, when it's an appropriation, we're able to tell them. We want this money for paving, I'm gonna pay for road X, Y, and Z, and any leftover will be spent on this paving here. Um, and people then have the opportunity to see where the money is being spent and not, but either way, it should be in the budget. And every other year, we get federal highway money, grants. For class two roads, this is the year we don't have it, and that's why in the past, it's always fluctuated, and one year we would ask for a hundred thousand dollars from our. Voters, because we were gonna be getting a hundred or a hundred fifty from the state, and then the next year we'd only be asking for fifty, and then we'd be asking for a hundred, so that number was always changing, so the budget was able to stay. Stable. And the appropriation went up and down accordingly, whether it was the year we got state funds and up. Um, but it makes sense to be in the budget, and there should be money in the budget all the time. And the last thing I would point out that affected the budget is we have the uh, one percent optional money that was originally designed to help us through segment six. And I have to go back to the taxpayers and bond. And get more money or raise our taxes, when that was done, we were hoping to use the one percent money. A lot of it on, on roads. And it can only be used for capital expense. And last year, uh, due to circumstances that happened, the. The select board. Correctly purchased a truck and ordered the truck to come in, but at budget time, it got. The, the figuring of that truck got mislaid, and that was. How much, Mr. Occam's two hundred and sixty or three hundred and sixty thousand that. We had committed to spending and we had ordered a truck. But we did not set aside any funds for it. And so when it came in, all of a sudden was just, oh, so we got a truck, we gotta pay for it, so we depleted at that time our one percent money. To buy that truck and I have to put it on the shoulders of the taxpayer, so it's great that we had it and we could spend it, but it's left us. What I would say is a little short as to the planning for going forward with the one percent money going to the roads. Which is what I would like to see happen, that in the future, a lot more, and then in just another year, we have a, a live fund, which was the original bond for funding segment six. That's gonna be paid off in a year, and that payment, when that's gone, is gonna free up a sizable chunk of money. If we don't spend it somewhere else in the interim, uh, it would be nice, because that one was a select board. Fifteen, eighteen years ago, eighteen years ago, I believe that. Uh, started the money to segment six, but they put a lot of local paving into it, which was suicide, because it was taking. Uh, putting payment down that only lasts three to five years and, and paying for it on a long bond for twenty years. So those roads were long since destroyed and had to be done again before that bond was paid off, which will be paid off next year. Next year, things are gonna look better than they look right now, this is a tough nut, and the question is. The biggest thing is gonna be being able to, to educate and sell. What is going on to our population, so they understand it, because the first thing they read is. Thirteen percent or thirteen and a half percent increase on voting no, without knowing the facts of. Thirteen percent or thirteen and a half percent increase on voting no, without knowing the facts that drove us to that point. It's, it clearly was not bad spending or bad decisions by the select board.
Actually, our hundred thousand dollars is closer to four percent now than this three.
Closer to what?
Four percent than this three, a hundred thousand dollars will drive the budget up about three point eight percent now, not very.
Number is three, three.
Three point eight million.
Three point eight million, so every. Every thirty-eight thousand dollars is one percent.
So that means a hundred thousand dollars is less than three percent. A hundred thousand dollars is less than three percent.
When I was making the suggestion of bringing that paving number down to two hundred, it's only because the request was for three roads, and I felt that. If we paid two of them, we'd still be hanging in there this year, and, uh. I don't think that we ever, ever actually funded three hundred thousand in paving on a year that we did not have the matching. Uh, class two road grant.
Well, we had a motion for discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would just like to make a little clarification, just because the point you brought up about tax burden is very real, I pay taxes, I don't like paying. More taxes than I have to, but it's important for you to not be misquoted, and that when, if your state taxes go up thirteen percent. And your town taxes go up thirteen percent, and the school taxes go up thirteen percent, that doesn't mean your taxes go up thirty-nine percent. It means that your taxes go up thirteen percent. Because it's averaged, it's not added. And so, um, as I say, I wanna keep our taxes down, but I don't want this idea that somehow we're getting fifty percent tax increases.
And on the, and the educational side, we've never known what the, uh, state educational money hand is. So their budget might be up to that much, but let the taxpayers pay, so it becomes, you do have a number, it's, it's to be.
To be raised by taxes.
To, to, to be raised by taxes.
It is the minus number on the last page, it's three million, two hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred and ten. As opposed to last year, nine point seven percent.
Nine point seven.
So I make a motion that we, um, approve a budget for three million, two hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
No, that's not the motion.
Raised in taxes.
That's the amount to be raised by taxes.
To be raised in taxes.
You have to. The, the amount.
Okay, then, I just need to have the number off the, um.
So it's three million, seven ninety-six, one eighty, with thirty-two, seventy-one, five, ten to be raised by taxes. It's a nine point seven percent increase.
In the amount to be raised by taxes, it's a thirteen point four, four percent increase in the amount of spending.
Okay, that's my motion, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Thirteen point four, four percent increase in the amount to be spent, and nine point seven percent increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Yeah, I'm gonna second it.
I think we need a second before we can discuss it.
I'm gonna second.
Tommy. So I've heard that we may have, we've spent a lot of time and effort, um, the police department to. Establish a canine unit that is effective and, uh, seems to be efficient, and we're looking at sustaining my program already.
React.
What?
Why?
And, um, I would actually, this was something I was gonna bring up, um, as a separate motion, but. So. When we were discussing the police department, we were doing line item, doing line item things, and, and that came up, and it was a discussion. And then at the end, we decided to, we agreed on a flat number for the. Police department's budget of nine hundred thousand dollars, and, um. My question now, uh, and once we get through this.
Motion.
Yeah, it is. Could we not leave the police department budget at nine hundred thousand dollars, but. Say, fine, you know, keep the dog, but you're still gonna have to work out how to pay for it within the budget we already have.
Excuse me, that was, that was one of the questions that I had at the budget meeting, because you all voted on the dog first.
Right.
And then voted on a flat allotment for the police department.
Right, and to be honest, when I made the comment about a flat allotment, I was thinking that that would also include the dog, but then. Other members of the board felt differently.
So, I, I work with the police department closely, quite often. Um, we have, at this point in time, we have a very good department, um. They are exceptionally helpful in all manners, so. They are out there doing their job, you guys need to give them the tools to allow them to do their job. They have equipment that is getting run down, beat down, because it is past due for replacement. Uh, I re- I remember, it wasn't that long ago, where we didn't have a police department, we had a police officer. Because they pretty much got all run down, beat up by the board, beat up by budgets, and, uh. And a few members of the board will remember back in the day, where, where all of our police officers, we had none left. We had to subcontract out to the sheriff's department for a time being, it takes time to build up a department. A lot of time, a lot of effort, we have had, um, we have our fair share of turnover in there. But we have a very good crew right now, I believe, and I would certainly like to keep them. And make sure that they have the personnel. And the equipment to do their job effectively. That means they need police cars that run, that aren't sitting in the shop waiting for a transmission for six months. Police cars that aren't a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and it, you don't, you don't. Drive very fast with it, because you wanna make sure you can get there. Yes, they do have some new stuff, but they have a lot of old stuff, and they have. Done what they can, and you guys spend a lot of money trying to keep some of this junk on the road. We have been driving cars until they're not inspectable. That's the only time you end up replacing it, is when nobody could put a sticker. There should be a replacement plan, number of years, number of miles. Turn it over, and turn it over before it's junk.
I'm gonna, I'm the one that made the motion on doing away with the dog, um, my reason for doing that is. The budget was very misleading as to the expense of the dog. It had in the, it had in the budget for canine, three thousand dollars, that doesn't even cover the cost. Of the officer. For having to take care of the dog. Yes, the dog was donated, it was, I don't, I didn't care for the process, they never came to the board. And got board approval on getting a dog, they just, well, we've got it donated and this and that, and it was gonna be taken care of, it was gonna be funded. All of a sudden, this last year, the numbers that I have. Was roughly twenty-six thousand dollars it cost us just to have the dog. Um, that's a far cry from three thousand dollars that's in the budget for. There's stuff, I believe that the department has been misleading, he's been misled on the cars, um. Yes, the, we do need, we do need good equipment to keep our, I do, I don't disagree with that a bit. Um, but when it comes to a budget meeting, and it comes to me as a board member. That these cars, one's ready for the junkyard, the other one's right there beside it, I happen to know the mechanic. I stopped for some other stuff on my own, I said, what about this two thousand thirteen Dodge? Said, just inspected it. Really? Said, last night I was told it was junk, ready for the junkyard. Heard the same thing about the other car that's sitting out there, yep, we've been waiting for a year for parts for it, for a dry shop. Um, after that, he said, it's gonna be, we'll have it ready, be inspected, we'll be on the road, and, and I asked him, I said, what about the safety of these cars? He said, I have no doubt that they will go in hot, and they will come out hot, if I didn't, I wouldn't. Inspect it, I would have the cars gone, so I think that our department heads. Have misled us, have misled me on some of that issues, and that's the issue that I have with. Why I voted the way I voted on the dog, um, there's, there's just, uh. There's a lot of numbers that we aren't seeing on this dog that, that we should be seeing, um, a- and I blame that. I blame that probably on myself as a board member, for not doing my research, back when the dog was asked to have the dog. But I also blame it on the chief for not giving us those numbers that we should have had when they said that they were going after. For a canine, I don't, I'm not blaming it all on the department, I'm blaming it, a lot of it, at least on myself, because. As a board member, I wasn't responsible to the point whether I should have gone and done some of this research myself, um. So, that's, that's where I stand on the police department.
But, but isn't this a, you know, doesn't some of this come down to a department issue, you have a department, you have a department. You have a department head that is there to manage it. Um, they're given a budget to perform their duties, you know? Sometimes you need to let them run their department.
And I'm, I'm, I wanted to run his department, I'm not telling him. That, how to run his department, I'm just saying, as. A board member, just one, that was my issue that I found in the budget. And that was why I voted to eliminate the dog, and as far as the cars, again. Um, I don't disagree that we need new cars, um, that we need to keep new equipment under them, I don't think this, I don't think this year. Is the year to do that, um, but that's just where I stand, I'm just a little like Heather.
Um, and I think Cecil also, yeah, maybe not, um, you looked like you were ready to talk Cecil. Yeah, so what I would say is that I was not on the board at the time that we got the dog, um, I don't know. I just won't comment on that process, that said, now that we have the dog, and the police chief sent us. A really respectful and detailed, um, bit of information, and you might, if you've read the minutes of the. Um, budget committee discussion, I abstained from the vote about the dog, and my reasoning was that. It's, it's really tricky, because I, I wasn't there for the original decision, but now that we have the dog. And we have an excellent officer that comes with the dog, who happens to be one of our more experienced officers. Um, in a department of largely, um, inexperienced officers, relatively speaking. Um, that's not to be taken lightly, and I, I, I have very serious issues that I raised at the budget meeting. Um, about the morale of the department, and I think that we should not take for granted that. Their morale is important, and that if we sort of, um. Like, just take away something that the department feels strongly about, that we could pay a bigger price than we realize. Um, and so, I think that in the spirit of, um. Compromise, the police chief in his letters, he suggested that there was part of, part of what has to be done with the dog is. To do with the feeding and the care of the dog, and that officer is, um, uh.
Willing?
No, so like compensated for that, but he, he agreed to do some of that. At a lesser rate, which in, in, in effort of compromise, I mean, he has a dog and he is entitled to it. And it is really, um, I think it speaks highly to him and to the department. And I think that we should reconsider the dog for largely for. And I learned more about what specifically has been found with the dog, which also really affected my.
And just, I'm just a follow up on Heather, um, so, and Officer Elwick is actually on, on Zoom with us. Um, so, my understanding from the chief's letter and, and from Tracy's concerns was this. Half hour per day that was paid at time and a half overtime, uh, which last year came up to be, uh, just under fifty-five hundred dollars. And what the chief has said is that Officer Elwick, after discussion with him about the select board's intent to disband the canine unit. And in an effort to preserve the program, has agreed to forego the half hour of overtime pay per day, in lieu of being able to take that half hour shift. Which is required by law, um, out of his regular shift to be able to feed and maintain the canine, so there's. That budgetary concern, um, the officer is taking that away on. And because he wants to stay here with the dog, the other thing that, um, the chief pointed out. And is of concern to me is that. When, when police dogs go, their, that, the, the dog and the handler are a team, um, and so. You know, I'm concerned that losing the dog also means losing an officer, uh. At the time that we were discussing it all, like I said, to be honest, even though we had made this vote on the dog. I thought when we agreed on a flat nine hundred thousand for the department, which was. Less than the chief had wanted, but a slight increase from last year, that, that would then allow the chief to decide. Whether to keep or not keep the dog, um, uh, and I guess I was wrong about that in terms of the, the voting at the time. So, and. That's why I brought it up, um, it's not within Tim's motion about, uh. And I don't know if I would need to make an amendment to your motion, it doesn't change the bottom line at all, it would just be. Reinstate the police dog program, it has to stay within your nine hundred.
I think you'd have to have the motion.
I think that's a separate motion.
A separate motion. Chair, and you were up first.
Um, I feel strongly that having a police dog on our force is an incredible opportunity. And it is another officer, that is what they're trained for, they, they conduct on the job. Okay, we have an officer who's willing to dedicate his time to that training of another officer, lives with them. Okay, that's what they are, they're not a dog, they're another officer, and, and they, this officer. Has put everything he could into that, if you can find an officer that will work for you and do that. And you mess this up, we're gonna lose it, cause I'm gonna tell you right now, I would do something for my dog before I do it to any, for any living person. Those dogs will die for you on the job, that officer will not work here if you cut him out with that dog. Cause he's gonna love that dog like you love your family, that dog could save his life on the job, okay? So we're now, no, let's not call it a dog, let's call it an officer.
Exactly.
And if you wanna cut out an officer, you may lose officers for that too. And so, this is big, if we are lucky enough to have an officer that is a canine officer, we're lucky. And we'll never get another grant again, if we, or anything, if we blow this. They do an incredible service, that dog can diffuse things, that dog can save the other officer's lives. It can help children through a rough moment, those animals that go through that training are absolutely amazing. They're far better than any of us people, cause they have to, I mean, there's just so much that goes into that. Cause they have to, I mean, there's just so much that goes into that. So if you put that officer in that place where he's not compensated or he has to make compromises because it's not clear that our community is supportive of funding him, he will be gone. And you will lose one of our best officers. And that's on you. Don't let it happen. He's that good. And so is the dog. I, I don't know what you have to do, cut something else, but that is an officer. And we need a solid police department and that is part of it. We made the commitment. It's done. We don't just cut an officer. We just don't. We need them all.
I just wanna say that the police force that we have in this town now compared to what it was under the former, former whatever, town manager. Uh, no, police chief. Um, did I actually, like before, I'd be better off calling my neighbor for help than the cause. You actually have a decent police force that people can count on that they actually look out for the citizens in this town. And so Heather, my question to you is why in the heck would you abstain from that vote? You're elected representative. Why did you abstain from that vote?
Um, because I didn't feel like I was ready to make a decision responsibly.
If you're not ready, what are you doing on the select board? Come on.
Taking in the best information I can at every meeting.
You could have saved that, uh,
I really couldn't have. It still would have been a four to one. I wish that it were different, but it still would have been a four to one. But, um, I, what I so when it comes to the dog, um, I wholeheartedly agree with Tommy and Sharon that it's valuable and um, I am thankful to the police chief for being respectful. And also that, um, being respectful and, and writing and, and providing some more information because at first glance, I was like, that is really expensive. I also do feel though, um, like one, the biggest part that I am really thinking is that whether I was on the board or not, when this commitment was made, we made a commitment as a town or as a entity, I don't know that it, it, I think that we would be doing a disservice to to revoke.
Well, I think for point of clarification, I don't think it ever actually came to the select board. Um, so the select board didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on it and I think that is also what has factored into the discussion of it.
Well, it's the previous administration.
And, and so, but you know, again, I will say, I was one of the people at the budget that initially voted to disband the canine unit and part of that was because I had a misunderstanding about how much money was actually being spent for it. It had been spent on it, um, and but you know, that said, you know, I own that action, uh, but in light of the feedback that I have been getting for the last few weeks about this specific thing and in light of the, uh, chief's letter and what the officer has offered to do, I just thought it was something that we could look back again because it wouldn't change the bottom line of the budget. It wouldn't be making any changes to the bottom line. It would just be saying to the chief, you can keep the dog, but you're still, you still have nine hundred thousand dollars to work with for your whole department. Um, but again, this is not, I, and I apologize for taking away from the question at hand, which was the motion to adopt the bottom line, um, of three million seven hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
We'll call the question.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving the proposed budget? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I would now like to make a separate motion to allow the chief and the department to continue with the police dog program with the understanding that it doesn't change the amount that has been awarded the department in this budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, since we're gonna have this discussion again, um, the, um, the part that is the difference between the way you see the money spent and the way Tracy sees the money spent, and I must say, I see it the way Tracy sees it, is that every time that canine officer goes out of state to get certified or feeds the dog, which he has to do a half hour every day, that's time out of the schedule that somebody else has to cover that time that he's supposed to be, you know, in Brandon doing his job. And so it does create a burden on our force. And I think that we're a community, um, that is not large enough to support that feature. And the way I've explained it other times is that, you know, if you go to big cities, they'll have bomb squads and SWAT teams and detectives and all kinds of people that they need because they use them regularly. And these are appropriate features of larger departments. And then as you get smaller, you have less of those extras. And at some point, um, you know, you have the other extreme of, of none of them. And we're somewhere in between. And I think, my opinion as one of five, um, we're not a department that is large enough to support a police, a canine program.
You know, um, it was my understanding from information at the budget advisory committee meetings that the police dog has been involved in, I think over a period of time of six months in seventeen or eighteen different, um, apprehensions. I think that warrants the fact that, that Brandon is big enough to need a police dog, number one. Number two, um, the budget for the police dog, I have not seen it broken down, but all the time that the officer, the human officer is spending and being attributed to the police dog, he's also serving on i- in his normal schedule. So we're not really taking money out of the budget. We're just shifting it, it, and looking at it slightly differently. And my, my third, I think it's my third. I'm on a roll here. Um, my third point is that if we keep on underfunding the police, well, two, two parts. One is Tracy, you said that you, you, you wanted him, the police chief, to be able to manage his own department except for the dog, but that's you're, you're slapping your own self. You can't manage his own department and then you micromanage that part that says, but you can't have the dog. So you either have to do one or the other. Um, and, and the last thing is and maybe I'm giving up a little bit of my blue coloring here. The libertarian liberal whatever, but I think we need a more active, uh, police presence in Brandon because I am concerned that crime is gonna gradually move in. If, if, if we do not have a visible and active police department, then we will be a target for people who are moving in when they see that we don't have an active and visible police department. Not people who move in as residents, but people who move in to do crimes. And that's all.
And I guess another concern I have, um, that relates to when he's in training, another officer needs to fill with duty. Um, if we lose the canine handler because the canine and canine can usually go together, um, then that creates a hole that the other officers are going to have to fill more regularly than just those training days until we can find a replacement. And, you know, rather than have to find a, a new recruit who will probably be much less experienced and to keep a senior officer who is in the community, lives in the community and wants to stay in the community, um, I think that budgetary hit's gonna hit one way or the other.
And I forget all the time that you already have invested in this officer and this dog. It was hard for the police department to manage without him when he was gone to training. But they were all for it. What does that tell you about your police force? That they were all willing to give up part of their day to have him be trained. We have an investment in him and we just wanna just throw it away? I mean, that needs to weigh on that scale a little heavier keeping him. In my opinion.
I am extremely offended by Tim Guile's comment about the dog and the waste of time of thirty minutes because we all know, when we've worked with other people in our profession, that we spend thirty minutes a day helping them, training them, uh, you know, sort of helping them through their days, listening to their problems, whatever. It doesn't matter what job you have. You spend time on your coworkers and it's an investment and it's annoying, but it's a reality. There's no health insurance on this canine officer. There's no retirement on this canine officer. There's a whole lot of things that you don't pay that you would pay for a human. Now you've got a human that if you shortchange him or even his comment, the one comment Tim made tonight could be enough for him to send his application into someone else. I'm embarrassed and appalled at that comment, Tim. And I hope I never hear that again. We need a better select board member than that.
Vote me out.
We need to.
Do it.
What I'm saying is that if you said that to me after I did all that work with a canine officer, I would be applying tonight. You will likely lose him because of this discussion. There's probably not much you're gonna do to save that unless you straighten out and stop nickel and diamond and understand that's an officer and it's a commitment and fix it. Let's not nickel and dime it. If you didn't do your homework, that's partly management's fault. It's partly the board's fault. But it's done. And so now, you might, if you dismiss him, you're saying to that officer, we don't care what you've done with your career the last few years. We don't care. And an officer will look at that dog and he will go elsewhere. And I think it will happen already because of this discussion. And I'm just appalled that you would put us at that kind of risk. We have had a drug problem in this town for as many years as I've been here. Those dogs are unbelievable in drug situations. There is, there is absolutely every reason to believe we need that dog, that canine officer in this community and we need his handler. And whenever you have a human officer, let me tell you, they take, they take family leave and they take intermittent leave and they take doctor's appointments. And trust me, they have a lot more sick time than you have with a canine officer. So we should, we should let that officer know as a community that we support them, both of them and the whole department. And we better straighten out because this is appalling. I'm actually sick to my stomach, what I heard tonight.
I just wanna say on a positive note, I just think, you know, we need to have a sense of loyalty to the folks, the, the individuals. And that includes a dog that lay their lives on the line every day to protect us. I just think, you know, we need to, like morale. We need to support our officers. They're risking their lives for us.
Anything else? We'll call the question.
Could you repeat the, um, motion, please?
Uh, motion by Heather, I'm sorry, motion by Cecil, seconded by Heather to allow the chief of police to continue with the canine unit with the understanding that it does not change the amount that has been awarded to the department.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Wow.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, fiscal, I'm sorry.
I'll just talk about money.
Yeah. Oh, it's the pleasure of the board.
On the bottom line and okay. I move that we approve the warrant for five hundred bucks, for the dollars, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Now, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They're all having a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Now, back in.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.